It's Tuesday, July 19th. In a minute here, I'm going to call the public hearing. But let's start by saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Okay, so the board of, this is the ad that went out. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 19th, 2022, beginning at 7:00 PM at the Newton Town Hall, Two-Town Hall Road, Newton, New Hampshire, and via Zoom to take public input on the acceptance of $25,612.80 from FEMA 4516-DR-NH Public Assistance Grant Program. These monies are from the Electronic Message Board sign usage from October 21st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. So per that, we are holding this public hearing to take public input, but maybe before we do so, Trish, did you want to just give a brief kind of Reader's Digest version of what this is all about?
Okay, Reader's Digest, I'm done. No, only kidding.
Perfect.
So this came from the message board. This is something that Homeland Security allows us to use during emergencies for COVID messages, although today on our legal calls, they're also saying, let's light it up for the high temperatures that we're going to anticipate this week. But in this case, this money is, has been received by the town. We still have more that's coming for this year, and it will be put into, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the general fund this year. And then in January, we will do a warrant article saying that it should go into the Emergency Operating Center account, which actually pays for us to be able to work in the Emergency Operating Center. When we're in an emergency, if it's only a federal declared emergency, which right now it is, we don't get reimbursed our payroll. So if it wasn't for the fact that we had, we got state reimbursements last year, we wouldn't be able to open the EOC. The ARPA money allows us, for me to work, I'm working on grants, so that's a difference. That's coming from the state, from the governor's office. So this money, again, is, is kind of like maybe the detail fund to the police, or maybe the ambulance fund for the fire department. This is a way from the EOC to get some money to put into that account. So should we have an emergency, we actually could tell the EOC staff, okay, get out, whether it's, you know, checking people in a snowstorm, or this week, maybe to make sure they're hydrated, whatever it might be. So this is money that the taxpayers wouldn't have got, and should we have to spend money that isn't in our budget, it would affect our taxpayers at the end of the year.
Awesome.
Yes.
How much money do we have in there right now, just out of curiosity?
In the, for the message board, I want to say, and I'm going from memory, I think it's probably like 107,000 plus this 25, and the most recent one that I just wrote and submitted is another 43,000.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Does anybody from the public have any comments or any questions? Okay, given that, I would entertain any motions, perhaps a motion to accept.
So I'll make a motion under RSA 31:95-B to accept and expend unanticipated funds in the amount of $25,612.80 from the FEMA-4516-DR-NH Public Assistance Grant Program. These monies are from the Electronic Message Board sign usage from October 21st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Given that, I'm going to, at 7:06 PM, I'd like to close the public hearing on that subject. And I'd like to move along to open at, we'll call it 7:07 PM, another public hearing. And this public hearing was posted as follows. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 19th, 2022, beginning at 7:00 PM at the Newton Town Hall, Two-Town Hall Road, Newton, New Hampshire, excuse me, and via Zoom, to take public input on the acceptance of $25,612.80 from FEMA Grant Project 660735. These monies are from the Electronic Message Board.
You just did that one.
You just did it?
No, this is a different one, I thought. They sound very similar.
I know, the other one's 257,000 from the ARPA funds.
I'm just reading off the.
Let me check, which one are you using?
It's not that one. So the one I have open is FEMA and ARPA PH newspaper.
Okay, so that's the one I just read.
Right.
So it's the second one down per the RSA?
Per RSA 3195-B to accept and expend unanticipated funds in the amount of 257,955.30 from the state of New Hampshire. This is the second payment out of the American Relief Plan Act that has been received.
Okay, go with that. All right, any comment?
Two seconds.
Well, that's just, you just read the subject matter, we have to.
Oh, I thought I was doing a motion.
No, not yet. Hold that thought. Any discussion? I think, Trish, you basically covered it.
Yeah, this is the other half of the report.
Exactly.
Yep.
So we got this exact amount last July, I mean, last June, the end of June, and this is the second half of it. And this is what we're using for the American Recovery Plan Act for things that we might need in the buildings, recreation, conservation land, a slew of things that the committee is working on. And this allows us to do that. We have to earmark it by 2024 and use it by 2026.
Yep. Otherwise, we lose it.
Yeah, we have to give back what we don't use.
Right.
Right.
Awesome. Any comments, questions? All right, I will entertain a motion now, Charlie. I don't know.
I'll make a motion per RSA 3195-B to accept and expend unanticipated funds in the amount of 257,995.30 from the state of New Hampshire. This is the second payment under the American Relief Plan Act that has been received.
Seconded for discussion, you had a number.
Yeah, let me just check that number first.
I think you said 995, it should be 955.
It's 900, Trish?
95530.
It's 95530.
Okay, thank you.
I'm still a second. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's unanimous. So I'm going to close this public hearing at 7:10 PM. All right, and now what we'll do is we'll shift gears and we'll, let me just pull it up, and we'll call the normal July 19th public portion of our meeting to order, or back to order, I should say, at 7:10 PM. And I will, I will entertain any motions anybody wants to make to seal the minutes.
Give me one second here.
I'll make the motion that we moved, that the board, where is it, just came out of non-public session, is that the one you want, Matt?
Yeah, under.
Under RSA 91A32A and C, in that they keep all materials discussed confidential until the opinion of the majority of the board, and the circumstances no longer apply except to provide the bookkeeper with the necessary information for payroll.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. So continuing right along, the first thing we have is, I believe we have a Comcast representative here, Brian Christensen, who wants to talk to us tonight about broadband extension partnerships. So Brian, welcome, if you'll please come to the mic.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Brian Christensen. I was listening to your public hearings. It seems like this is the night of federal funding conversations. Again, Brian Christensen with Comcast. About a month ago, we sent a letter to all our communities, basically soliciting input on what is known as the last mile of people that may or may not have service in communities. And that is why I'm here tonight. Let me give you a little background on why we sent that letter. The state has about $120 million of funding, i.e., it was granted through various federal programs to build to people that don't have broadband service. Broadband service being serviced is defined by 100 megabits per second down and 20 megabits per second up. The state recently released an RFP that is due this Friday, looking to grant one recipient, and only one recipient, up to $50 million to build to people that don't have service in their communities. There's a second tranche money, about 70, 72 million dollars, that we anticipate rules coming out for sometime in August or September. It's called the Broadband Matching Grant Initiative, BMGI. And that's kind of where we're soliciting our input from the communities from. Let me tell you what we've done to kind of determine where we have service and where we don't have service. You can imagine, we are very knowledgeable where we have service, we're not very knowledgeable about where we don't have service, right? That stands to reason. But we've, we've done a lot of legwork. We've, we've searched in our biller, we've searched in our design systems, we've searched in our construction tickets for people that may be calling from communities. We've worked with the FCC broadband mapping tool that they have online, where you can put an address in and say, and they'll tell you what's, what has service and what doesn't have service. And really what we're working with local communities for is kind of that fourth leg in that stool, that needle in the haystack that says, you know, the Smiths out on Loop Road live at the end of a dirt road, and they don't have service that we don't know about. And that's kind of what we're, we're looking for, local communities for help with identifying. I don't expect you guys to know that off the top of your, top of your head, but if that is something that you know intuitively, or through the grapevine, or through institutional knowledge as being, you know, the leaders of the community, please feed it to us, and, you know, we'll take a look at it and hopefully put it into a grant at some point in time to get service to that community. That's kind of it in a nutshell on broadband funding for the last mile, and that, I guess I'll take questions from the board.
So if there was, what would the process be if there was somebody who?
Yeah, so.
Would we be involved in that process?
At this point in time, no. We are not really looking for, I just heard the town accept their ARPA money, we're not looking for any community funding. We believe the next round may be looking for community support, and by support, that may be a letter from the board or from the town administrator saying Comcast is a provider in town, we believe they can get to the last house on Loop Road, or whatever the rules may be. But we don't anticipate any financial support coming, needed from the community. It does not seem to be any indication of what the rules are going to say.
Any other questions?
Like you said, this is just gathering the information, getting everything ready so that once these grants do come forth, then you'll be able to hit the ground running and.
Yes.
Go take care of business, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So it sounds like a next step would be kind of a non-opposition type letter from us?
Yeah, if, if we identify spots in town, and I'll be honest with you, we have not yet. We, we think we are 100% covered in the community. So if you've, if you're at the corner store and somebody says, I don't have Consolidator, I don't have Comcast, they're not at my house, that's what we want to hear.
Yep, yep.
Well, we can always put out on our website and also put it in the paper, get an article in the paper and put it out there for the residents so that they can come forth.
The website may be problematic because those are the people we want to find. But I get your point, sir.
Yeah, well, with their phones, if they use them somewhere else.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Maybe they see it at work or whatever.
Right. Because everybody's got a phone, so, where they have Wi-Fi at work or whatever.
Absolutely, sir. Yeah. So that's all I have. Diane, did you want me to talk about the franchise agreement first, put second?
Well, we have to have the public hearing first.
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, if you want to bring them up to date on that.
Yeah, so Diane mentioned you're going to hold a public hearing in a couple of weeks for the franchise agreement. I won't be here, I'm getting married and I have a lot of out-of-town company coming in.
Congratulations.
So if questions come up between now and then, before the public hearing, you can certainly feed them to me. Essentially, your public hearing is to get cable-related needs from your community, make sure your franchise agreement's meeting those, and that's kind of what a public hearing is in a nutshell. 20 years ago, a lot of people showed up to those, people don't show up too often anymore, but we'll certainly take any feedback, questions, comments, concerns.
So we can do those via email or whatever?
Yeah.
Should we need to? All right, well, I guess that's it. We appreciate you coming down tonight and, and speaking with us, and we'll stay tuned, no pun intended, if there's anything else on this subject.
Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a wonderful wedding.
Me too, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks. All right, so going on down the list, I think Chief Jewett's going to talk to us about the drug drop box.
Evening, Board, Mike Jewett, police chief. So as you guys are aware, over the last at least 10 years, we've been doing a quarterly drug take-back program through DEA. And what that is, is we try to get unused prescriptions off, out of people's homes. So we put them into these quarterly take-back programs through DEA, then they get destroyed. Let's move over. So with the DEA program, we take back every quarter. In between the DEA take-backs, we can't accept anything, so we have to turn those drugs away. I can't hold them in evidence, I can't take them and put them in a shoebox somewhere, so we turn those back out. One of the things that a lot of PDs are starting to do is they're putting a permanent drug take-back box inside the building. So I looked at, I looked at a few of them, and I found this company, American RX Group. And what I've come up with is a lease agreement that I'd like to do with them. And basically, it's going to cost $99 a month for me to have a box at the PD, and the $99 a month gets me disposal of the drugs. They take them, they ship them back to wherever they need to go. It has monitoring, the box itself is alarmed, and it has, it's hooked up to the Wi-Fi in the building, it tells them the weight of the box that's in there, and sends a notification every time somebody drops something off. So we always know when someone's using the box. Part of the problem, if we did it without doing this, is now I have to find a place to destroy them. So I have to get DEA approval, and I have to send two officers to an undisclosed location so that stuff can be destroyed. It's a hassle. This drug take-back program through the American RX Group, they do it for us, they send us a letter, and they work with DEA. So there's DEA letter, DEA has to be notified that we're going to have the drop box, and I know that, you know, it's 100, it's $100 a month, but I'm letting the board know, this is something I think would be great for the community. I'll take it out of the budget now, but I'd like to see come March, if we could get a, in another line item, so I'm not taking $1,200 out unless the board doesn't have a problem with me doing that. So basically, I'm just asking if you guys would support it, if I can go ahead and do that. I think it'd be great for the community so we can take stuff back. You know, where, there are a couple PDs around us now that are starting to get drug take-backs and having the permanent boxes, but it's been one of those things that there hasn't been that many around.
Well, for me, I can speak and attest to what you're saying. Just two times for you having to send two police officers, what would be essentially to an incinerator, the time spent, the, the fuel, all of that, that two times a year costs more money than it would cost you to have that box all year round, to have somebody come pick up those things out of that box. Because I know it's a hassle, because those incinerators, they're, you can't just go in there, you have to make appointments, you, you have to go in, you can't just walk up and throw them in, there's a whole procedure to doing it. And like you said, it's quite a, it's a big deal.
It's a process, and the good thing with this RX company is they give us a letter of destruction.
Right.
And they tell us to wait and how much they destroyed. So we have that for DEA, and they also send a copy to DEA. So it's like a double security that, you know, now we don't have to touch it.
And not only with you, but I've also known from my family, it's getting hard to find police stations, fire departments, even hospitals, that they won't even take some of this stuff back if Chief Jewett was unable to take it, that families are having a hard time trying to find locations to be able to get rid of these items, whether they're unused needles for diabetics, the drugs, whatever it is. So this would severely benefit the town.
Yep, the only thing, this particular box does not take needles. Needles have been a big problem for us, they're harder to get rid of, the hospitals don't want to take them, and we've got several residents in town that have them in bulk for medical needs. So, I mean, we've, we've seen in the thousands come and trying to come in, and I can't take them.
Yeah.
But there's, you know, prescription drugs and that sort of, you know, different things, we can help out and get rid of. And we're trying to, we have some partnerships with local hospitals that take the needles, but they're getting so backed up with them.
Yep, so.
I think it's kind of a no-brainer.
Exactly.
Everybody agree?
Yep.
So I think what you're looking for from us tonight is us just to say, we would support this as a line item down the road in March, but, but definitely move forward, is that really all you?
Pretty much what I'm looking for.
I don't think you need a motion or anything like that.
As long as you guys are good with it, and you think it's a good thing for the community, I'll take it out of the budget for this year, and then I'll budget accordingly in March for however we need to do it.
Everybody good with that? Any questions?
I just wanted to ask some questions. How much have we taken back right now? And what are we taking back?
What we take back, I don't know, because what, the way the DEA drug take-back works is we put a box out and you throw your stuff in. I don't know who you are, I don't know what you put in there, that's not my business.
They don't give you a list of what you, what you took in?
There's a generalized list for the state, they count it at the end. I can tell you that on average, we've been sending, each quarter when we do it, we've been sending anywhere from like eight to 16 pounds back just for here. So we're getting, you know, eight, you know, I've, years ago, we've, I know one of the years we had like 23 pounds, but we hadn't done it in a while, they hadn't been running the program, but now it's every quarter. So we're still getting, you know, a good amount in. I can't tell you that we get two pounds a week of, you know, whatever it is.
I understand that, Mike.
People are asking, but I can't take it. So what we've been doing is, I partnership with a place in Kingston, and they have been providing us bags to dissolve the stuff in, and then you throw the bag away. Those bags are expensive. They gave me a bunch of them to try out for samples, and that's what I've been giving to residents for like the last year or so. It's basically, you take your prescription, you dump it in it, add water, it dissolves it, and then you throw it out. But I'd like to be able to send them back to the RX companies and get them out of here. And I think this would be the safest and most secure way to do it.
Just speaking for myself, I'm always a day late and a dollar short. I always see this stuff in the medicine cabinet, and then I realize you just had it the day before.
And we're still going to, we're still going to continue to do those. We may not do them every quarter, but we're still going to continue to do those as well, in case someone doesn't have time or they want to do it at that.
All right, everybody good on this subject?
Yeah, thank you.
Chief.
Thanks, chief.
So we're moving on down.
That matter, are we entering into a contract?
I, I don't believe, Charlie's asking, is it a contract we need to?
Now?
Enter into now?
You said you were going to do, you'd put, take the money out of your budget to the end of the year.
Yeah, it's a lease.
Are we entering into a contract to do this now?
Yeah, there's a lease agreement that I can sign and just take it out of my budget where it's $100, but then I guess I'll come to you guys in March and say, do we want to continue to leave it in the budget, or do we want to go and open up a social service line for the PD, and I can budget $1,200 out of that.
Okay, so you, you can take a half-year lease?
Yeah, well, whatever they'll let me do. I think if we send it back, it's a prorated thing, if we send it back within six months, we owe them $400 or, the longer you keep it, you don't owe anything if you send it back.
Yeah.
My goal would be not to send it back. My goal would be just to come up in March and come up with a new line item in my budget for community relations, stuff like that, and put it in, you know, I don't care if it's in the budget, you know, it really should go underneath all the other ones that we do for, you know, drugs are bad, and all the different social services that we do every year, we do them individually, it should be in with that, but I don't know if it can or not.
Okay.
So I'll just leave it in the budget, and I'll just budget for a line item for social services, if you guys are good with that.
Yep.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Thanks.
All right, so we're moving on down, item E, Town Clerk Dog Licensing, it's that time of year, Mary Jo, I think she's on the, on the Zoom maybe, if she wants to.
I see an MJ there.
Hello?
She's the only MJ.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So yeah, it's that time of year, and that's just the letter that you sign that gives me permission to give the list to the police so that you go get our dog. It's got claws, whatever.
All right. So I don't know if anybody wants to make the motion.
I'll make the motion to move to sign the warrant in accordance with RSA 46614 from the town clerk to authorize animal control office and/or police department to assist civil forfeiture notices to owners of unlicensed dogs.
Second.
Seconded by Bob, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, excellent, is that it?
That's all, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
All right, let me go back to my agenda. All right, looks like we have F is an ARPA EOC update, Trish?
Okay, so for the EOC part of this, I touched on it a little bit ago. We've had multiple Homeland Security calls this week because of the temperatures and the high humidity. They're reminding everyone to please, whenever possible, stay indoors, hydrate, and if we have to open up our cooling center, we will. I'm kind of letting you know, both the fire chief and the police chief is going to put it on their website if we do need to open, we will be there to help people if they need a cooling center. So far this week, I've already called a lot of our seniors, our older people, and so far, knock on wood, everyone seems to be okay. If you have a problem and you're out here in TV land, call the EOC at 603-382-1610, 1610. Also for this report, in the last 14 days, Newton has had 13 new cases of COVID. Just a reminder, we're kind of getting a little lax, it's not over, so really be careful. Only 43.9% of our residents have been vaccinated, that's 1,121. Schools so far, because they're closed, I don't have an update on that, their last update was June 10th, and clearly they're not reporting right now. You all heard about the Seabrook era? I don't have to type, it was actually kind of comical, our phones were ringing off the hook. When something like this happens and you're not sure, please call the EOC. We were kept in the loop right away, and they wanted us to know, to give numbers, if people had questions, who to call, what media source to use, they didn't want us reporting on anything, they wanted to take care of it. So again, if anything like that happens and you have any questions, it's 382-1610, that's the EOC. the EOC line. We have another legal update on Thursday at noon, they're gonna bring us up to date with everything else that's going on. And as far as ARPA goes, we're gonna do a pretty extensive report at your next meeting. We've got a few things in the work, we've just got to try to finish it up, so we'll give you that report at your next meeting.
Awesome.
Thanks, Trish.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trish.
All right, I believe the Fire Chief is on Letter G, a proposal for a new fire department vehicle, which he teased at the last meeting. Good evening.
Yeah, we had a discussion at the last meeting. I was told to have a proposal, you have a proposal in front of you. There's actually two different ones. One proposal is to start the lease 30 days after the vehicle is delivered, and the one that I would recommend, I don't like paying for nothing until it's in hand. You have another one that would start, the lease would start one year after the delivery We've had, the town's had bad experiences doing a lease prior to everything being taken care of. So the board asked for a proposal, you have the proposal.
So we have the proposal, what's your, what's your take on which one? I think it kind of sounds like.
For me, I would do one year from now. We met with the company today, one of the companies for the warning lights, Charlie was there, looking at a few months possible for that. Radios are backordered, so it could take a little while to get everything done. But like I said, it's gonna be up to the board, we talked to the bookkeeper, the funds are in the budget. The town has just had bad luck.
So it is a slightly higher interest rate, right?
Well, from the original, and if we wait till tomorrow, I think it's gonna go up three quarters of a percent.
Two percent, yeah.
Yeah. The longer, and I think that when we sent everything last week, I think there was a note there, that the longer it takes, the longer, the more the interest rates individuals are increasing everything. So that's with the board. The board approves it, the chairman just has to sign it, and I guess the paperwork goes to Town Hall, to somebody, for them to send it out.
Mm-hmm. I think it's probably Kim at this point, right there.
And there is, I know the board always liked an escape clause, there is an escape clause in there.
Cool. Any questions for the chief on this?
Nope, it's all pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
Looking at the figures.
Budgeted item.
Yeah.
I'd like to see his second request, the one down the road, we pay the money down the road.
Pay the money down the road?
Meaning he says that we order the car now, we don't have to stop paying for the lease in a year, from a year from now, that's the one I want to do. Only because I want to know that when he gets the car, if the car actually works out. I mean, we've got a new fire truck that spent more time than where we bought it than it has here.
Right.
And I don't want to go through that again.
So just so you know, the truck is due to be delivered back tomorrow.
I know, I read that.
So this, you're talking about the one on the left side here? First payment due one year from the lease date?
Yes.
And you're opposed to that, chief, based on?
No, one year from?
From the lease date.
One year from the date?
Of delivery.
Of delivery.
No, that's what I said. First payment would be due 2023.
Right, not now.
Right, once it gets delivered.
Right, 2023 would be the first payment.
And that gives us the chance for the escape clause to work, if it's gonna work, because if you're gonna pay X amount of dollars per year, you're not gonna want to give the car back.
And the Crown Vic wasn't part of the deal, because the board seemed like last week it was going to the building department. So all we'll do is take, or we'll give it to the building department, we'll take the, this is approved, we'll make the appointment to have the warning lights taken out and the decals taken off, and then it'll be delivered to Two Town Hall Row, or wherever the board wants it delivered.
So first payment is due a year from delivery, does that delivery include all the other lights, radios, everything you need?
It's the vehicle.
So it's vehicle only?
It's the vehicle, I think, I think it says 715, 2023 would be the first payment.
But the vehicle will come complete, right? I'm not saying the extras, but I've been, from my understanding, there's been a lot of vehicles that have been rushed to being sold, and they're missing specific things, key items that are supposed to be part of the normal vehicle, that they're saying, well, we're gonna ship that later here, take ownership of it, and then we'll, and we'll get that to you.
The vehicle, forgive me, I'm not used to the police packages, the chief knows it better than me, it had, there's two police packages, one is a pursuit that the police have, one is another municipal package. It has everything that.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about that, chief, I'm talking about stuff like backup cameras, other basic essentials that these cars are supposed to be coming with, they're not coming with some of those things.
The ones that have the police package, I call it the police package, either if it's Package A or Package B, is not a typical vehicle that you would buy. So it will automatically not have some of the extras.
They're not gonna send it out.
That you would, you'd buy. It's just the way it is, that's why you get it for that price.
But that's what I'm saying, but you're gonna, it's gonna come the way it should.
Yes.
Okay.
It's gonna come with what's on the sheet.
Okay, yeah, that's what I mean, everything that it's supposed to have, it's gonna have.
We will check it.
Okay.
Yes, that it will.
Right, all right.
All right, anybody?
So I will make a motion, move to authorize the chairman to sign the necessary paperwork to entry into a five-year lease agreement with All American Investment Group LLC for a 2022 Chevy Tahoe to replace the 2009 Crown Vic. Payments will be made on a yearly basis in the amount of $10,750.55. Funds will come from the fire department vehicle lease line item budget.
Second.
Discussion?
You brought up a point about last week, the vehicle, so is that, there's no trade value to that?
No, what's happening is, there is, we were told there's about a $500 trade-in value on the vehicle. What's happening is the current Tahoe is gonna replace that one, and this one's gonna replace the current Tahoe.
Yep.
So they're just gonna move down the line?
You're pushing them down.
Correct.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Diane?
You gotta read the part where it says below is what the lease company needs to have in the minutes.
The whole approval for authorization?
Yep.
So we can vote on the motion though, right, and then read?
Yep, and I'll put it in the minutes.
So, all right, so I'm gonna call for a vote, if everybody's cool with that, all in favor?
Aye.
So that's unanimous?
So this is on approval and authorization, the governing body of the Leasee has determined that the agreement substantially in the form presented to this meeting is in the best interests of the Leasee of the acquisition of such equipment, and the governing body hereby approves the entering into of the agreement by the Leasee, and hereby designates and authorizes the following person or persons to execute and deliver the agreement on Leasee's behalf with such changes thereto as such person or persons deem or deems appropriate in any related documents, including any payment request form requesting funds from the vendor's payable account necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by the agreement.
And now the next one, the one above.
Yeah, you didn't read the one above.
Oh my word. Determination of the need, the governing body of the Leasee has determined that a true and very real need exists for the acquisition of the equipment described on Exhibit A of Schedule Number 2 dated July 15, 2022, of the lease with option to purchase agreement number TE-2187 dated as of April 27, 2018 between the Town of Newton, VC and All American Investment Corp. LLC, the lesser.
All right, I think that, that does it, so that was a mouthful. We'll have that signed at the end here tonight.
You have the pen.
Does that work? I have the blue pen.
I thank you, the department thanks you, and I'm sure your building inspector thanks you.
Eventually he'll thank us.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. All right, so we have H is a proposal replacement of Town Hall Septic System.
So I've noticed a little bit that the, it's wet out there where the septic, the leaching field is, so I asked Dennis Quintel to give us a proposal. As you can see, it's under 50, it's at 1,500, and I believe that just does like the design and gives you an idea of what needs to be done. That would just be, like I said, the design, it doesn't include the backhoe to dig a test pit, and it doesn't include the fee for the state application. I don't think we need to worry about paying ourselves the town permits.
Who digs the test pit?
That, I guess we would have to find someone to do the test.
Someone to dig the test pit for him.
Right. So there are places, there are people in town that do that.
Right.
But this is step one, it sounds like.
Yes, I figure you may want to think about doing this, only for the fact that if you have to do it in the winter, it'll probably cost you more.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's a lot easier when the soil's softer.
Yeah.
And it's been failed for a couple of years.
Yep.
Sir, would you like to say something?
Just to point of information, where is the current leach field located?
Right there in the front, right where they stand when they do the.
Elections.
The election.
Oh, it's real bright.
That's what I thought, okay. Because have you given any consideration just maybe putting a holding tank in for the time being?
Move up to the mic so people can hear.
Has there been any consideration of just putting a holding tank in instead of a new leach field? Is there consideration?
Diane, would this be for the whole complete system?
No, this is just your proposal, your design, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, but the design would include the tank, and it would include, if you needed a pump system, it would include the field, whatever type of field you were gonna be putting in there. That's what it would include.
Okay.
I've done quite a few of them, so I know.
Okay, I've done none.
I've done.
Oh, yeah, according to this, he's just gonna do up the diagram and do it.
Yeah, he's gonna do a design, but do you need a complete design, new design? Or could you get Leveron to approve to just replace the field that's there, not the tank or anything else?
Well, it would, again, that would depend, because now where you got the pavement and you're in front of that building here, so where would you put the new field?
Right, when you do, when you do it in kind, you do it right in the same spot.
You can do it, I thought you couldn't do it in the same spot, you had to move it.
No, you don't have to move it, not in kind. And the Health Department can give us an in kind. What they do is they just, they don't mess with the tank and nothing like that, they just dig out the field and put in a new field.
Put in a new field?
That's it.
All right, I didn't, I thought they had to move the field.
If you move the field, you've got no place to put it.
That's why that was my next question.
Yeah, you have no place to put it.
So if we, if we had a full inspection done of this?
No, but if you do an inspection, don't you have to dig stuff up?
When they do, when they do an inspection, they take and dig up where the covers are on the tank, they look in the tank and see what's going on in the tank, and then from there, they'll go dig up a corner of the field and see what's happening with the field.
And they can see if it's circulating through what it, how it's supposed to?
It's not very invasive, right? And that's the kind of thing they do before you buy a house, right? They have to do that.
Yeah, you do an inspection, yes.
So I'm wondering if that's what we do, is?
Who do you get to do the inspection?
Pete Septic?
Pete Sewell.
Something like that?
Yeah, one of them.
Yeah.
I have a list at the house.
Yeah. But Pete, I think we've used Pete before here in town, so, so we have his phone number, so, do we want to do that next?
I think that would be, Pete, come look at it.
We're on a first-name basis with him, so, that's a joke, by the way, it's Septic, everybody's on a first-name basis with him, so, does that, is that sound like a next step? I think we should file this for perhaps future usage, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not a Septic person, so I'm just.
We'll make you one, Diane.
No, I don't want to be one.
You don't want a Diane.
I don't want that hat.
But I would, yeah, I would just call the Septic Company and say, this is what we're noticing, could you come take a look and give us advice on next steps?
Okay.
Awesome.
And then he could probably give us a quote on what it would be to put a tank in, if we wanted to go that route, too.
He won't give you that.
No?
No. He's gonna come down with a probe, he's gonna stick it in the field and look for the field, and when he sticks that probe in there, he's gonna look for water.
Right, no, I mean, if we decided if it failed, if we wanted to go with a, to put a holding tank in and just be, and not redo a field.
You still, you're still gonna follow the regular procedures.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying.
Anybody interested in running for selectmen? This is what we talk about. We talk about septic systems, and years ago, we were talking about bathrooms at the transfer station, it's good stuff, so. Okay, so we'll wait, wait to hear on that. So moving on to Letter I, Review Police Station Feasibility Studies Submissions, we had two submissions.
I have a slight I'd like to talk about on the, oh, that's the wrong one. On the Mayor Kennedy Architect one. Down here, if you go way down on 2P.
So can I, Charlie, I think there's some hard copies there, I think Matt has them, if he's.
Oh, okay.
I didn't want to print out all 22 pages.
Page nine of the Mayor Kennedy Architect. They do financial perimeters according to what they think the unit would cost per square foot, and they have the area of the building itself. So they're saying that it could ultimately come to a total of about $1.7 million to renovate that police department and bring it up to code and do everything that we were talking about, looking to do. And at that cost, it would be a lot more prudent for us to be thinking about what I suggested before, about just doing a brand-new Town Hall with a police department attached, and we could get two brand-new buildings for a lot less money, and it would be done all brand-new, it would be easier, and the town would totally get more bang for its buck going that way than trying to rehab and spend that kind of money on that building.
And they're just talking about the library to be included. I have, I have a question along those lines. So the capital improvement plan, because let me back up for a minute. I do see the value in taking a look at this, because if we just take the kind of punch list approach, we're probably not gonna get the full bang for our buck, right? You have to have more of a strategy, I think is what we're talking about. But the capital improvement plan, what's the kind of deadline for that, Bob? You're the most familiar with it.
They were trying to have that in originally, I believe it was done for August, all the stuff from. I believe it was done for August, all the stuff from the department head so that they could start to move forward with it. And I know they had to push the date.
Because to me, I might be wrong, but I think that kind of feeds this sort of thing. Like, like first, we need kind of that strategy, that plan. And then we need to engage somebody for the whole town. Like, we need to, we need to turn around and say, we're probably not gonna do anything at the fire department, right? Because we just built that building. But all of the other buildings, we need to kind of have the strategy for the town and what, what we're gonna invest in and then bring that to warrant, essentially.
Well, that's the whole thing is according to the capital improvement plan, you're looking at which buildings are in more dire need of being taken care of and addressed. And right now, the police department is one of them because of all the issues that it's having and the expansion of the town. So the police department needs to be made bigger. They have to have the exhaust systems and you're talking, again, you're talking, whenever you go into a building, the updates. Now you have to go up to code. So again, trying to bring everything up to code on an old building and go in and not necessarily tear all kinds of stuff apart or whatever substantially costs more money. So if you look at the capital improvement plan, the CIP for short, the three buildings that came up were town hall, the library, and the police department. And like I said, I, you know, I don't know about putting the library with the town hall. But I know it would, for me, it would make sense having a town hall and a police department together in that one building because you could have the police department on one end of it and town hall on the other end of it. Whereas, you know, trying to include the library, I don't know if you, if you really want the police department with the library because with the kids and everything else that's going on in case there were emergencies and whatnot. Would be my concern about keeping the library separate from that one building.
So I, I think where I am is I don't want to kick the can any further on up the road. But I don't, I don't think we should be signing to do anything just for the police department right now until the capital improvement plan is done and we can look at that and.
And therein lies, that's the other thing. So that kills me because now you're looking at both these plans. You're looking at spending $12,000 to $18,000 just for them to do a report, which is gonna take four months or so down the road to get. And that money that could be well invested and put into an architect designing a new building rather than just throwing that money away to an assessment that we could and possibly might not even use.
Are there any other buildings that need capital other than what we've talked about?
Yeah, I mean, Bob's probably right on in that the police department is probably the most in need.
Oh, I agree.
But there are, yeah, there's certainly other buildings.
I just have a quick question. I don't need to know the numbers, but of the two proposals, did that include doing anything on the second level of the PD or putting in an elevator or other offices there? Or is this just the downstairs for 1.7 million?
It's the entire building.
That's the.
Entire building?
Entire building, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing to think about, though, is if you get this done, now you have something to feed into the capital improvement plan as well.
Right, but I, I keep thinking, and I could be totally wrong. It's not any business that I'm familiar with. But it seems like where, I'm gonna mix my metaphors, but, or no, maybe I won't. Cart before the horse. Like, right now, I, I think the, the capital improvement plan is the horse and this is the cart. Like, we, we need to have the strategy, the plan before we engage an outfit to do up a plan like this.
Yeah, because you're looking to see of, of all the buildings, what's really needed before we start combining certain projects together, I think is what you're trying to figure out.
Exactly. Because what Bob's saying is, is that might be the solution. What Bob's saying is perhaps, I'm not saying it is or it isn't, but it might be moving to, to get the best investment for the town. It might be, you know, I don't know, moving things there, right? To the second floor or whatever. But it's, it's like we can't, we can't like take the siloed approach, I think is what I'm saying. But that's just me.
And the only reason why I, I bring up the fact of being able to put the police department and the town hall together is because of what it would cost for two separate buildings. You could accomplish getting those two building needs put into the one building, but still having them sectioned off, having it all done brand-new. You know what I mean? You'd be, you'd probably, we would cut the cost by at least, I would imagine, by a third of doing two buildings as opposed to the one.
Anybody else? I don't know, Chief, you're, no? We're talking about your building, so.
I appreciate you guys even talking about it. I kind of, I agree, obviously, you know, one heating system, one air conditioning system, one septic system is better than having two buildings that need work. The problem that we're gonna have is, you know, we have a building. It's working for our needs, but we're quickly growing out of it. Town hall is in need, sounds like a septic, sounds like we're gonna be spending money in a lot of different places. And, you know, do you, and feasibility studies are a lot of money. And that's just to tell you what it's gonna cost you to fix that building. So you spend the money now to find out that, yeah, the building needs work. Or I think what needs to be done is the board needs to decide, do we want to try to combine a couple buildings to save on heating, telephone systems and all that kind of stuff? Or do we want to do all separate? Because if you try, because what's gonna happen is we're gonna be back in three months from now and we're not gonna have anything else done. It all depends on what the board thinks would be the best feasible thing to do. Should we merge together? I have no problem with it. It's your building. You know, is there room up there? Yeah, there's five acres up there, so there's a way to make that work. You know, I don't know. I don't know what the best route is. I know my building needs some updates. I know town hall needs updates. I know the library needs updates. So what do you do? Do you build another steel building like the fire station and put everyone in one? Or do you dump money into each individual building? Then what do you do with this one?
Well, and therein lies the other issue, Chief, is so when they start doing this work, where are you going?
Trailer.
Puck and lot.
That's what I'm saying.
Been there, done that.
And this, in the proposed timeframe that they're proposing to do all this work is in two months. It's well over a year and whatever. And by if we, if we were to do the combined building anew, you would be able to maintain this building for now instead of a trailer while the new building was put together. And then we would all be able to move in and then the town would have that building to maybe we wouldn't have to put all those upgrades in, but spend a lot less money into it. And then we could do something else with it.
I guess I would make the recommendation if, and I know we looked at doing a feasibility study just on that building, perhaps maybe change the RFP that we did on it to a feasibility study to include completing the second floor to house the PD, town hall on the first floor and reconfigure. But I think you need an architect to do that.
But, but I still go back to, and you gave input to the capital improvement plan, just like every department did. As advertised, the capital improvement plan was to be done so that we could prepare for RFPs. So, so I, I think what we're looking at here, we're not quite ready for just yet. That, that's where I think we are, but.
And I agree.
I think there's, RFPs coming and I think it should be soup to nuts. I think it should be every building that has any sort of question marks about anything. And, and I think we should, should look at it then, you know? But I, and again, I used this before. I don't think we're kicking the can up the road because the capital improvement plan is currently being worked on and currently has a committee and is currently moving forward. So it, it's not, I mean, things do take a long time in municipalities. It's just the way it is. But at least we have momentum with the CIP right now, so.
And again, I'm gonna say again, you add all these nickels and dimes up to what these feasible proposals that they're doing, they start to add up over $100,000. And they could start adding up to a couple hundred thousand dollars. And that couple hundred thousand dollars would be better off invested in a new building versus putting it in somebody's pocket for doing some diagrams and some drawings and whatever else.
And I agree, but how do we get to that point?
Exactly what we just talked about. I think we have to look at exactly the CIP that we have, what's coming up in it. Like we've said, we've done it, Chief. I asked for you to come in. You were gracious enough, you did it. The other departments did. And I will sit and get hold of the people doing the CIP. And we will get this as a rush order because it needs to be done. Again, we're getting nickelled and dimed. You said it, the septic, the roofs, the sidings, your building not being up to code. We keep paying all this money out when we could be paying this money to buildings that will be energy efficient, will be up to code, will last for years down the road so that we're not constantly trying to throw Band-Aids on these buildings to keep them so that we, we can use them for purposes that we need.
Just as a side note, the people would be able to vote on all of this. So if you're watching at home right now and thinking we're gonna sign you up for, for a Taj Mahal, this is all part of the process to put in front of the voters.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. All right. So I think we're putting this, these two things aside for now. We will probably be looking at them.
Yep, I'll let them know that you, that you decided not to move forward with it.
At this, at this time.
Yeah. Well, if you do it again, you can't just take this.
Well, I know, well, absolutely. I just want them to understand that, you know, the, like I said, the, the goal of the CIP was to get to this point. So we'll probably be having new RFPs to share with them in a, in a few months.
Okay.
All right, cool. Moving on, anybody want to do J? That's easy.
I'll move to per RSA 3195-B to accept and expend unanticipated funds for the food pantry.
Second.
I don't have it.
Was that Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Mike's the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And now we're on to other business. Thing for other business other than the.
Well, the amount was $140.71 for the food pantry.
For the food pantry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I read it off my sheet. I didn't read it off of this one.
Oh, okay. So slight change to that motion, but everybody's still in favor, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So under other business, do we have an other file, Diane?
No, I don't have anything.
Because we just met last week, right?
All right. You get a lot accomplished. So you have the manifest?
I'll do the manifest. Move to sign manifest dated July 19, 2022 in the amount of $100,636.81.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign emergency management revolving fund dated July 19, 2022 in the amount of $5,621.31.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to sign inspectors fee revolving fund dated July 19, 2022 in the amount of $14,436.54.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign the police special detail revolving fund dated July 19, 2022 in the amount of $17,753.78.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign payroll manifest for pay period July 3 through July 16, 2022 with a pay date of July 21, 2022. Total payroll is $56,799.92, which includes $805.40 from the opera administrative cost.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept the non-public and public meeting minutes dated July 11, 2022 as written.
Second.
And you did both public and non-public on that?
Yeah. Public and non-public, yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous? All right. Any announcements? Who, Trish has an announcement?
Nope, she's not on the agenda. She comes up and does this all the time.
I know.
Stop the presses.
I forgot. I should have mentioned tomorrow or the rest of this week with the temperatures. If in fact you need assistance and the EOC number, which most of the time works, sometimes it doesn't, you can also call the fire station at 382-8811.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trish.
Joe, you have something? Okay.
Just a couple of updates, see where we might be. Number one, the storage solution we were talking about, any progress on that?
I'm sorry, what's your question?
Storage solution we're talking about, storage for records and stuff like that?
Yep.
But any progress?
Progress, I believe so. MJ, we should have done it when she was here, but the, I believe June 30th was our end date on the action items. And then we are due to have another meeting of the committee soon. So we should have an update coming, coming shortly at one of these meetings.
And then some time ago, we talked about a technology update or something like that? I know you were spearheading a committee to do something. Did anything happen on that?
Was I spearheading a technology?
I think you were on it and maybe Mike was on it or something like that. You asked Mike to help you with it?
Oh, no, we were.
Had to do with telephones and all of this stuff and whatnot?
We were, and that's on me, that, or at least to start, is an updated policy for, for devices.
Yeah.
The device policy.
IT devices. So I've started to mark up a policy. So I've got to share it with Mike and then we'll have something.
Okay. And the other thing I've been hearing about is, is any, any, any progress on the, on any litigation that might be going forward with the, with the other selectmen right now?
With the what?
With the, with the other selectmen. People are asking questions as to what's going on. There doesn't seem to be any answers coming forward. I don't know if there's anything you can share with us, but I think people would like an update.
I, I think the only update we can give you is last time we discussed it, we're waiting to hear back from Rockingham County Attorney and we haven't heard back.
That's an update.
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks. All right. Any other business? Any other announcements? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Charlie won the foot race. Mike's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I think we're back in August, right? First.